Good evening, I have six o'clock, I'd like to welcome everybody to the September twenty-fourth meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. And at this time prayer will be given by Reverend Robert Johnson of Ebenezer Presbyterian Church.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We invite you to bow with us in prayer. Oh wise and eternal loving gracious Father, the Creator, the Maker, the God that woke us up early this morning, started us on our way, brought us all through the day. And you brought us, Lord, to this hollow place. Where we as your people of this great historic city might reunite together as a family. For we believe where there is unity, there is strength and there is power. We come dear God, oh because you said in your word, "Let us come and reason together," says the Lord. So we are here to reason with our city officials and staff and citizen. So Lord, we invite you to have your way within this place, have your way within each and every one of us. If anything, this is within us that shouldn't be out of order. We pray that you are God of order, that you place everything in order and able us to hear, to listen, to understand and to feel each other care. But we love our city and we love one another. And we are all about doing what is good and right for the good of all of our citizens. And we've come to say, "Thanks for bringing us together." This is a historical moment and we cherish this moment. So have your way. It's not about us, it's all about you, doing what is good and right and pleasing for all of God's people here. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Mr. Johnson, please pledge his flag of our country.
I pledge my flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's what you call the vote.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderman Harris, present. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Alon, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Vess, present. Alderman Odom, here.
Everybody's here. Now is everybody good with the agendas, any changes need to be made before we get going?
No, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we agree to the agenda as is.
Second.
Motion is second, is our discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same, motion carries. Item number five, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number five is a presentation by the Greater Duffy Field residents on Stanley White Recreation Center. Tonight we have Bernard White and Barbara Lee who are in attendance. They're planning to give us a presentation on the Stanley White Recreation Center. So I will turn it over to them.
Barbara Lee.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
I wish to say it's nice to be in front of y'all once again. On behalf of the community and all the Stanley White believers, we are down here to try to help Stanley White rebuild in the same facility. We have met with y'all, I think three times, or we've met three times dealing with it. And we've been given points from me with y'all of how it can be done. So all we're doing, we're trying to make sure that we follow up and that without doubt that we can get it done. Stanley White has a great history, a lot of people don't know it. I could only give you a little bit of it even though I grew up in it. It means a lot to the community because we, including all the coaches and people that work there, have helped save a lot of ture. Without a thriving recreation committee or recreation in the community, we stand a chance of losing people. We don't just talk about sports, we talk about education. We have them scattered all over the world. And some of them we hear from, some we don't. But eventually they'll send a letter and say what they've done or where they're from. We are proud of that. We've had a gentleman who made it big and he used to donate to Stanley White team every year. We are just trying to keep things rolling. And I know if we can build back better in that community, it can thrive. I went back and checked and looked at paperwork. And I asked a person other than the sidewalk office, I asked a person, "When has two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars been spent in Duffy Field?" Most people can't really answer that. I know some areas get eight-hundred or nine-hundred thousand dollars every year. Me knowing that, it's kind of disheartening to me because I myself now trying not really to say exactly how I feel about it. I just know these people love it, we've had meetings. Nobody's trying to take over the meetings, we try to negotiate or talk with the city. We want it to be in on every meeting and I know it's probably impossible for that to happen, but it could happen. But we want, every time y'all came up with a decision, we wanted to be there so we have a little input on it. Other than that, that a certain amount of trust, a certain amount of heartfelt reason that some people don't care how you feel or what you have. Stanley White is our last, last step. It's mad that I might be with a few others, I might be the only one who remember when they didn't even want to build Stanley White. So we're going back through it again. And when we got it done, it was one of the most pleasant things that ever happened to us. You know, my kids and all the kids around. And if you grew up in New Bern and you don't know who the chief was, you never grew up in New Bern. You might have grew up on the other side of town, but you never grew in New Bern. The chief was Stanley White, everybody knew him as chief of Stanley White. Stanley White... Stanley White would have a field with over three-hundred kids in it, him by himself. And then he picked up a gentleman by the name of Pickett. And little Pickett has been coaching longer than anybody in the city of New Bern. He'd been coaching over fifty years. He started when he was a young lad. But nobody knows that. Nobody spends much time with ture as he has set up programs. I've been side by side with him for forty-five years. Nobody knows, nobody knows what we do, we call parents and do everything else. That's something that Stanley White used to do. So what we're asking for is really, from the board, is really not much. It doesn't take much for y'all to do it. It's not going to hurt the city, the city grows off of that. But you bring joy to a whole lot of other people. So I don't want to burn up all the time and some later put a blemish on what I'm saying. I just want to thank you for allowing us to be able to come down here and try to get our point over. At this time, I think Bernard's going to handle this.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Bernard White. Tonight you're going to treat it with the two Bs, Bernard White and Bernard George. And this is Bernard George here. And I feel very good about appearing here since I've worked here for twenty-four years and I've appeared before this board on many occasions. This is my first occasion to appear on behalf of my community and I'm proud to do it. Bernard White, he mentioned Charles Pickett, Charles Pickett, could you stand? There he is, he's standing, he's real short, you think. But he's one of the many mentors that Stanley White brought up. And he's been volunteering in the recreation department for over fifty years. From the very beginning, right while he was in high school and continues today. And it's, can I say it, your late sixties? And still doing it for the kids. And so I'm going to begin this presentation by just thanking the board for your vision. I watch you on TV for your ability to sit and discuss things and come up with wise decisions. And that's why we're here tonight, to give you input before you make any decisions. Because we know that, you know, this is community based. Your decision, the public hearing process, is a process of public input. And these people have come out, these citizens have come out, taken time out of their business schedules. Some of them, probably the first time they've been down here. But because it's something so dear to our community, so dear to our children, the future of our community, and so dear to those who grew up there and can remember how a village raised the kids, we want to continue to do so. So I have here, in fact, a copy of my presentation. Mr. City Manager, it's good to see you. This is a presentation that I prepared. And the community has asked me to speak on its behalf. The community has asked this group that we formed, Citizens for the Restoration and Preservation of Stanley White Recreation Center. And for those of you who are part of that group, please stand. And I want to tell you on the front of that, our officers, Barbara Lee is the chair, Bernard White, who you just heard, is the vice chair, Carolyn Williams, the secretary, Reverend Ethel Sampson, our assistant secretary, Reverend Lester Strahan, our treasurer, Christopher Bryant, our assistant treasurer, Reverend Robert Johnson, and many others who contributed so much to this effort, thank you all. But we've been meeting since January. We've met over twenty or thirty times. As Mr. White said, we've been out here and spoken to the board at least three times en masse. And then Reverend Sampson and her family have come and they've made it part of their responsibility, the pilgrimage down here at every meeting, petitions for citizens and to convey the fact that our community wants Stanley White to be BBB, Build Back Better. Reverend Johnson said, he said, "Add another B, beautifully." And I add that too, because it's all part of my background as a city planner. You want to contribute where the city contributes, then that's where private investment goes. We've seen that with the city itself and your improvements downtown. We've seen it along Broad Street, now it's slowed to percolating into Five Points. But if the city is not interested, if the city is not willing to invest in a community, then it's difficult to get private investment to invest there too. So we feel really that whatever the price tag, it's not too much to spend in our community. Our community, yeah. Now, you see, you can read this later, I just skipped through it. But it's a little profile, on January the eighth when we first met, a committee comprised of twenty concerned community leaders representing every major civic, religious and institutional organization in the Greater Duffy Field community met to discuss the recent status and future plans for Stanley White Recreation Center. And in recognition and support of the community center's vital importance and historical location, our community leaders unanimously agreed to formally organize a Citizens for the Restoration and Preservation of Stanley White Recreation Center and to vigorously advocate for the immediate restoration and improvement of Stanley White Recreation Center. The committee further agreed that any plans of consideration to permanently vacate or demolish this vital historic community center would be a death blow to the very heart and soul of our community that must not be allowed. It must not be allowed. The community has been strongly opposed to proposals to relocate this historic facility. On March twenty-second, more than one-hundred residents attended a community update by the mayor and several board members and staff who insisted they support Build Back Better but must wait on the results of the FEMA four-twenty-eight application. Residents engaged city officials with a series of questions that conveyed the community's extreme frustration with a lack of Board of Alderman action to adjust needed repairs. The elected officials assured residents that nothing could be done until FEMA approved the four-twenty-eight application to rebuild Stanley White Recreation Center. According to officials, the application review and the proposal process would take several weeks even months. Well, it's been six months now. Despite our meeting from time to time coming down here, we have not had a definitive comment or proposal on the future of Stanley White Recreation Center. And that has left our community in a state of flux, in a state of uncertainty as far as the future of it. You know, with over four-thousand people displaced during Hurricane Florence, we heard stories that Stanley White had flooded once, twice, three times. Well, according to Mr. Pickett, Mr. Pender, who between the two of them probably have close to a hundred years of volunteer. And Mr. Bernard White, it has never flooded but this last time with Florence. So, you know, I've lived right near and I've never seen it flood. But regardless, there is, there are certain statements that say you can't build in a flood plain. Well, I put on my thinking cap and I say, "Well, where all this development on the oceanfront, on the sea?" Why don't we have development along the streams and rivers? You know, why is that so? What we propose is that Stanley White be demolished, palers be driven into that site so that the site can be stable. And that you raise the building to twelve feet, whatever the requirement is now. When the city, at the time it was built, it was six feet, finished floor seven feet. We're talking about going five more feet. Well, go five feet, put the palers in there, there is not another property in the central part of this city that consists of forty acres. Where can it go? Where can our kids be accommodated? I'm concerned, this was the first summer that our kids have been out in the street. Not only that, we have had a multiplicity of people who've come forward in our community meetings who talked about the importance of Stanley White to the community. You know, the importance of parks and recreation to our city's quality of life is huge. Most surveys of cities, the citizens rank parks and recreation indicator of their quality of life one of the highest indicators of quality of life in any community. So why are we talking about tearing it down and moving it? God help us, on Broad Street in Five Points where one of the highest truck camps in the city is. How can our kids get back and forth? Stanley White is a great safe place. And I think I've heard mothers and fathers talking about it, and I have. We turn our kids loose, we turn them loose and we say, "Go to the gym." They go to the gym, they're involved in after-school program, meal programs, football, basketball, under the ostriches, under the training and discipline of somebody like Bernard White. He looks stern on it, he don't take no stuff. And I like that, I like to send my kids, Charles Pickett, my son wanted to quit football one year. He came back and told him, "I'm quitting." I said, "No, you're not, you don't quit anything to start." And I said, "Last of all, you're not going to quit on Charles Pickett." That's my buddy and that's the best person I know for keeping you straight and who has the welfare of the children at heart. Let me give you a little background, Stanley White and Henderson Park are located on forty acres. Stanley White itself and the parking lot occupies two-point-five acres of the total park. Following the city's development of several recreation parks for white citizens, land for Henderson Park was donated by the city by local resident Gertrude Chapman. Anybody know Gertrude Chapman? Well, and so in nineteen-seventy-five, the park was built. For what was built though, it was a landfill. Just like the convention center, where that was the landfill and several other places. Well, with a landfill, if you know a little engineering, landfills are notorious for having bad soils. Using a landfill, if it's not properly prepped, and the mayor can tell you that, he's in development, if it's not properly prepped, then you have uneven settling. And that has occurred with Stanley White. That's why we've been told, I think by the consultant, that the building needs to be demolished because the underlying area under that, the soil, the uneven settling, just like at the convention center, just like in several other places, is settling unevenly. And so if you try to raise it up, that foundation is going to crack. So it needs to be torn down and built back properly. Instead of building it in a flood plain, at the flood plain level, put five more feet on. And not only that, that facility is the heart and soul of the community. We have senior citizen programs there, after-school programs. In fact, I was reading something that said Parks and Recreation is the second most popular feeding site across the country, Parks and Recreation. Stanley White gave meals, summer programs, camps, Henderson Park seniors, et cetera. So when you destroy that, when you take that out of the heart and soul of the community, what you have, you have disinvestment and you have a breakdown in the social fabric. We don't want it, we don't want it for our community, we don't want it for our citizens. We don't want it for our city. Well, I don't have fifty years of volunteering, but I do have twenty-five years. And I've volunteered to coach both black and white kids there at Stanley White. It first started out as one black program and one white program. And they brought them both together and Stanley White has an opportunity now. We got white families, what you call them, soccer moms who come and drop the kids off at Stanley White. That gives them opportunity to have relationships and then play with the black community. It's a mixing, a point of contact, a relationship building within our city, something that we need. So as we look at the year of inactivity, we are really concerned about it. We're really concerned, especially after the impact of Hurricane Florence. Our community has suffered disproportionately from the effects of Hurricane Florence. Our residents, yep, we have one-fourth the income of the average white resident. Our properties are valued seventy-five percent less, one-fourth. We have to struggle to make ends meet. And that's why I appreciate my fellow citizens who come out of the daily struggle, to come out here and to participate in the political process, in the community meeting, the city council meeting, the Board of Alderman meeting, so that our voices can be heard. We have been here on several occasions and felt that our voices have not been heard. We've not been recontacted, nobody has talked with us, so we come back. We're back tonight. Many of us don't want to come back, I hear from town to town, people say, "Why don't you..." The city's going to do what they want to do. You know, this is just a waiting game, the city's trying to wear us down. I've heard all of that. And then some people say, "Well, ten million dollars is a whole lot to put on a recreation center." I don't know, I don't know. And I say, "If the ten million was going uptown, downtown, out in the back, in other neighborhoods, would you feel the same way?" And so we have to move on past that. We have to move to the point that the city needs to invest in our community. And not just invest in Broad Street. Because you even know that fronts our community, it goes past Broad Street. We have residents, we have a residential area. And if the city does not feel that it should invest in our neighborhoods, then who will? You got to grow a cancer in your city then. And even though I read the article a couple of days ago that the downtown has bounced back and so forth and so on, but when you are recruiting for the city, when you're looking for businesses to relocate in the city, they look at how you treat, Reverend Johnson said, "The least of my people." You know, we got a financially strapped neighborhood. We're not high wealth neighborhood, what are you going to do about it? Are you going to let it grow the negativity like a cancer and eat the rest of the city up? Are you going to do something about it? Before business moves here, they go on the internet. You know, you go on the internet, you go pull up Arthur, you get pictures of the whole city. Oh, the pictures of downtown are beautiful. I have nothing against it, I love downtown. In fact, I had a lot to do with it, you know, with my time with the planning department. I'm proud of the downtown, but I'm just so proud of Duffy Field and my neighborhood. And I'm just as willing to fight for my neighborhood as our part of downtown. Now I just want to give a few things about the importance of parks and recreation and our city's quality of life. I just want to finish that last thought I had about recruiting businesses. They look and they see what kind of neighborhoods you have. When they see a rundown neighborhood, sidewalks missing, water standing in the street, streets in bad condition, you know, you can be proud of the downtown, but they're also looking at those other areas. They're looking at the schools, sure, they're looking at the theaters and other cultural activities. But they're looking at how the city itself is structured and how people operate together. Now, one of our best, most highly sought qualities of our New Bern city and our community is these friendly people. We got good citizens, we have great citizens. And I hear tourists, newcomers come all the time talking about how friendly the people are, what a good town we have. And my family has lived here close to two-hundred-and-fifty years at least, like many of these folks. We're proud of that, but we're also proud of the newcomers who come, who bring in their hard earned income, their investments and their ideas about how New Bern should be. Some of them want to make New Bern like where they left. But we know that New Bern is unique, we open our arms... We open our arms to newcomers. And, and we love to bring about new ideas and new concepts. Hurricane Florence was terrible. It affected the city terribly. And I look at, uh, the hurricane and the devastation it brought as an opportunity to start on a fresh, a fresh board. A fresh board. So we're depending upon the board, your vision, your foresight, the vision and foresight of the city manager and the rest of the staff, to work with we citizens and bring about a new day here in New Bern. Just a few more points about parks. Uh, I had an opportunity to go online and look some things up on parks, put, put a little bit of my planner's, uh, research together with Ms. Harris. I told Ms. Harris once, I said, "I'm a, I'm a city planner." She said, "You're not the city planner." I said, "I'm not, but I'm an AICP certified through the National Association of Certified City Planners, and I have every certification in the planning field." In fact, I've gone to every planning school in this state and their setting. So, uh, what I'm telling you and what I'm sharing with you is from a professional point of view and a personal point of view. Because I love my community, I love this city, and I want us to do what's right. I want us to do, make New Bern the city, the gleaming city on the hill. And we have that opportunity. We have. I just want to share this last thing about the importance of parks and recreation. I was cautioned by my, uh, chairman, Barbara Lee, to make this short, but, uh, I don't know when I've been short. But I, I do want to be interesting, and in fact, if I see your eyes glazing over, then I'm moving on. But the importance of parks and recreation and our city's quality of life. Parks are a tangible reflection of the quality of life in a community. They provide an identity for citizens and are a major factor in the perception of the quality of life in any given community. Parks and recreation services are often cited as one of the most important factors in surveys of how livability communities are. And we want a livable community. We want the best for our community. New Bern Parks and Recreation is a tribute to New Bern's vital identity, and this comes straight from the city's website. Well-maintained accessible parks and recreation facilities are key elements of strong, safe, family-friendly communities like New Bern. When citizens get involved with their parks and recreation systems, as we have, their quality of life improves, and we're looking for that improvement, aren't we? Parks and recreation opportunities encourage citizens to be engaged in their communities as volunteers, students, advocates and, and students. Community recreation reduces alienation, loneliness, and antisocial behavior. Our parks and recreation programs provide spaces for health and well-being that are accessible by persons of all ages and abilities. Parks have a value to communities that transcend the amount of dollars invested or the revenues gained from fees. We strive to help to provide a sense of public pride and cohesion to all citizens, and that's what happens. And this comes from the transportation, the transformation plan that the city approved, I think it was in twenty-ten. Just, the plan clearly states, add dance, yoga, tchacha, and other classes for older residents at Stanley White and other community venues. A wider range of recreational programs for adults and older residents will encourage greater physical activity and build stronger social networks. Dance, yoga, tchacha, uh, uh, several options that were discussed to be offered at Stanley White. The senior services building are other community venues. On that sheet I gave you, I have a list of about seven or eight plans that the city has approved since about two thousand. Every one of them talks about the necessity of Stanley White, basically, and, and, and the importance of it to the community and the central importance of it. None of them really spoke to the depth that we need to speak today of Stanley White, because no one at all thought of Stanley White not being there. Every one of those seven players. Not one plan speaks of relocating Stanley White. It's been in the floodplain ever since it's been there, forty-five years. Uh, like I said, the convention center, areas downtown, the downtown itself is in the floodplain. Why is it all of a sudden, because it's in that community, that there was such a burning effort that we can't have it there? Ms. White, uh, well, we had a meeting just on this past Thursday when we had testimonials from people as to the value of Stanley White in their lives. And if you turn to the folder, you will see them. One of our, uh, most outspoken was Mr. Alan Spruill, who was a professional basketball player, grew up here in New Bern, and, uh, who went on to play ball at A and T, was inducted there as one of his greatest players and went on to play professionally. Mr. Billy Moore, a New Burner, he is a sign, one of Stanley White's signs. He's a professional baseball player, was an all-star in college, baseball, football, basketball. Pam Woods told of the meetings and activities held at Stanley White, such as NAACP Senior Citizens Ceramics, Exercise Class, Little League Football, Basketball, Games and Tournament, uh, Greater Duffy Field Recreation Meeting, Neighborhood Watch, Health Fairs, Weddings, Weddings and Receptions, and Community Meetings, and so much more. We missed that. We missed that in our community. And as I was riding here, I saw kids riding their bikes in the street, almost could have been hit. They're going up Middle Street. Anybody coming that way? I know Preacher, you, you, you were right behind me, you saw the kids. If Stanley White was open, they wouldn't have been there. They would have been at the gym or they'd been at the park. But, you know, we need our community center. We need the sanctuary area that it provides for our kids, for our adults, for our community. Former Alderman, uh, Victor Taylor, New Bern, showed his efforts for youth and why Stanley White is needed for the future. Now, uh, Ms., there was a youth who wanted to speak, and, uh, if you want to come up, I, I don't want to take all this time up, and I think that a person with my gray hair, you know, we speak of Stanley White as though he's still living. This man never knew Stanley White. But what he has done was reap the benefit of Stanley White and the recreation center and the whole family of elders that gather around him to give him strength and to show him the direction that he should take. Go ahead, speak, please.
Good afternoon. I, my name is Tyrone Brown. I stay at seven twenty-six Second Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of the community and you. The gym... The gym has been there, there has been, during the summers, we go there and play and have community events. And...
Take your time, baby.
Like he said earlier, this is the first time we have been playing in the streets. And that gym has been there for us kids and also the adults of the community. And all I'm saying is that I think we should keep the gym.
Now, um, I'm going to wind this up, because I think I've, I've said enough. Uh, Barbara, uh, do you want to present the petition? We also have circulated a petition. Is, uh, Ms. Williams here? Okay. We do have a petition that we're going to share with you and leave you a copy. And, uh, we also have numerous people here this evening who are willing to speak on behalf of Stanley White. I'm sorry that I'm taking all their time, but they told me that they want a lot of people to speak tonight. Uh, I felt differently, because I think that they speak just as well as I do. But they want to keep it short. We don't want to overwhelm you with what we feel and our concerns, but it's, it, it is truly important that we come together as a city and stop, and stop, I don't know what the word is. Anybody got a word for it? I, I think that's a good word. Thank you, folks. But, you know, it, it appears to us that there's been a lot of procrastination. And, you know, we understand about FEMA. I work with them too, uh, Alderman, I asked them, and I know how difficult paperwork is. But we have not seen the board itself take any form of stance on this situation. And frankly, that scares us. That scares us, you know? We hear all kinds of rumors going on. And my, you know, my philosophy is to go to the source of the rumor and ask them. So we're here tonight to ask you. We're asking that, we're asking the board to end the uncertainty of our community's present and future well-being by approving a resolution of intent to build Stanley White Recreation Center right where it is and build it back better. That's what we're asking. Thank you very much. We, we, we wait to hear from the board and what your deliberations are. Thank you very much.
Mr. Bernard George.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm a little bit, um, upset because I didn't see my testimony in here. So, and also I'm a little upset because you made a statement that none of the Alderman got back to you, none of the Alderman talked to you about certain things. Now, you know, I'm with you all the way.
Yes.
So, don't feel like that you're putting me in a position, because I sit up here on this board, because what I say to y'all as a community, in the community, I will come back and replicate it right here at this board.
And we thank you.
So I just want to let you know that.
We thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and we didn't include you, you're right, in the testimony, because we expect to hear your testimony tonight.
I'm going to take that. I'm going to take that as a comeback. First and foremost, I just want to thank everybody from coming out into the community and representing. I counted probably about seventy-five, um, individual citizens. Um, second, I want to say that this is why I love the democracy, because we're, you guys voted us into office and you vote us here to be a voice. And I think it's important that we've heard your outcry, we've gone to community meetings, we've sat in these meetings as the Board of Aldermen and we, at Reverend Johnson's church, and we said that we support you. And I feel like based on what you said, it's important for us to stand by our word. And I would personally like to make a motion that we do create a resolution to be put on October eighth's meeting to say that regardless of what happens, we plan to build back better Stanley White at nine oh one Chapman Street, New Bern, North Carolina.
Ms. Harris, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, this time we have a motion and a second before the board. And if other board members have any questions prior to the votes, you're more than welcome to ask questions at this time. I would like, Mr. Stevens is the FEMA consultant here tonight?
He is, and just so I have it very clear what the motion is, because it kind of got loud and I think you got cut off. So I want to make sure and get every bit of what you were intending with that motion and the second.
So I said that I feel we should do a resolution that regardless of what happens with FEMA funding, that we as a board vote to agree that we're going to build Stanley back, back in that location at nine oh one Chapman Street, New Bern, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you. To, to answer your question, Mayor, yes, he is here.
Okay, Alderman Kins, did you have something?
Yes. Um, tonight I would like to make something clear that whenever someone comes before the Board of Aldermen, we should have a time manner that we can get back with them. And tonight I would like to have, uh, Mr. George to let us know who would be the contact person that we can contact them with the information that they come before us with, that we can provide them with that. So we need a name and a number.
I have the contact information for you, so I'm, I'm...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this time, Mr. Stevens, you have the FEMA consultant come up, because we, we went through this all last Tuesday night at a workshop.
They watched it.
We watched it.
Okay, good. And, um, I've, I've been called quite a few times by a lot of citizens in New Bern about this situation. And my question was, is that if anybody feels like the due process has not been completed on part of the New Bern Board of Aldermen and staff, by means of Senator Tillis's office, Senator Burr's office, the governor of the state of North Carolina, FEMA officials, uh, I, I am more than welcoming the opportunity for anybody that has any better input, uh, communication skills than the staff and Board of Aldermen have to try to resolve this issue. We certainly hope that we would have an answer from FEMA. And part of that, again, if the, if Corey would come forward, um, I'm sure the public might have some questions they want to ask. Uh, I have personally, uh, based on the motion, I have a few questions I need to ask in my fiduciary duty and my oath of office as to do the right thing for the citizens of New Bern. So would you come forward, sir?
Before he comes up?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman, Barbara Lee.
We don't want to delay a lot of things. We've taken a lot of your time already. What we came for is to ask you for a resolution that you are committed to re, to build it back, okay? So you got a motion on the floor that says that you will be committed. And so we would like for you to see you go through that first. Now, we did watch him when he told us, we realize and accept the fact that there are things that happens, the FEMA, the money, things that are going on right now. But if you can get that motion moving and we can hear that commitment, you have committed yourself to putting Stanley White back, we'd appreciate it.
Okay. Well, again, Alderman, Barbara Lee, um, part of the questions I have, so I'll give to you, um, so to know some concerns I have, is on the total forty acres, geothermal leap... so that you know some concerns I have, is on the total forty acres, geothermal speaking is, and engineering-wise speaking, I'm not aware personally at this time if moving the building over five feet, fifty feet, a hundred feet, if there are soil conditions, there are more structural integrity would, would support a new Stanley White. I cannot, I will not be able to vote tonight in favor of something, not having the information available to make the right decision, that in the spirit of this motion, for me to spend national, federal money, state money, local money relocating exactly on the footprint plant of the, of the, of the now Stanley White, I don't think I could do that. I need certain information and in incremental process, from the hurricane to the first hiring of consultants, because we wanted to expedite this, that we felt that when we saw what happened in Fayetteville and Lummerton, the process taken three years, we felt like we needed to expedite that, that's when we hired the consultant. And so from then, we certainly hoped that we would have an answer sooner.
Not to cut you off, Mr. Mayor, but we met at Ebenezer Baptist Church.
Presbyterian.
I'm sorry, Presbyterian Church. And we asked these same questions. So you guys have had from that time in March to now.
Okay.
Hold on, please, let me, let me finish. To come up with a solution or part of a solution with some answers. What I hear is smoke, okay? I understand that FEMA has told you guys ten million dollars. I understand that you got to find out whether or not the property is this and the property is that, but in the process, you guys should have already done that. It's been a year. I guarantee you, if this was in West New Bern, if it was downtown, if it was anywhere but Jumpy Field, and you guys know, I've been here every meeting, listening to you guys talk about this. This is not my first time up here talking to y'all about Stanley White. Stanley White is in walking distance from every part of this city, except for the West New Bern part. We have kids right now that can't go to rec center in our neighborhood because y'all dragging y'all feet, all right? Either you got to boo-boo or get off the pot.
That's right.
Okay, if you can't do something, tell us you can't do it. But don't sit here and blow smoke up us, all right? You should have already had these answers for us because we asked you guys about this already. This is not something new.
In answer to that, to your statement, Mr. Woods, Mr. Woods, would you let, come out and let me respond to your statement, sir? The process of FEMA reimbursement is that there are procedures which the consultant is here that I'd like him to, I'm not the expert on this, but if we violate this, the procedural matters in which FEMA reimbursement is given to the city, then we have to raise taxes. And then just as many people as are upset tonight, another group's going to be a fair upset that we, that we raised taxes and spent city general fund monies that fully were reimbursable and would have been funded by the federal and state government if we had followed procedures. So if we go ahead and hire certain experts to make these decisions that you're saying we haven't made, this consultant here is the expert. He can tell you if we get reimbursed on that or not.
But in December, if I'm not mistaken, I can remember in December when we were talking about the 428 mitigation, that was one of the questions that came up, whether or not if we rebuild Stanley White where it is right now and FEMA, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Stevens, it was something about FEMA and doing it in a floodplain and we had to clear all this up. I can't remember exactly, but I remember something about FEMA in December that was supposed to be questioned then, okay? And it sounds to me like it's the same, we at the same place today as we were a year ago.
Sir, would you, would you let the consultant, would you let the consultant update you and the, and the, and the public as to where we are on this?
Before he does that, with all due respect, Mayor, these individuals came out here to say, regardless of what happens with FEMA, right? Regardless of what happens, they want Stanley White back in that, hold on one second, they want Stanley White back in that location. What they say and what we need to understand is, we don't have to raise taxes because the same way that we could find five or six million dollars to renovate City Hall and put an elevator in there, we can raise money to put Stanley White back where it is. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. In the third, they watched, they watched what the consultant had to say, and I asked questions, and he gave us three options. And you can come to the podium and explain that, and at the end of the day, two out of those options mean build back better in that same location. And it's a question, it's, we have a motion, if there's no other discussion, we need to get a roll call.
Alderman Harris, you along with the other members are free to call for the question.
I call the question.
And, yes, sir.
I got, I got to say something. I'm all in favor of building back Stanley White, and I'm all in favor of it being named the Stanley White Center. But what I don't have, I do not have the information that is needed at this time to build, to see whether we can build it on that same footprint.
I'm sorry.
Well, you go, we do, we do this in steps, and the steps are first to have the engineering reports.
Hold on now, don't. But from, from what I'm trying to understand, how do we not have that understanding or information if the consultant could come to us and give us three options of what can be done with the location? We're waiting on FEMA to, to give us the money for us to move forward on the next part, but we have the three options of what can happen to Stanley White, unless I'm ignorant and I don't understand, but if we have three options, those are the options that could be done, one, two, or three.
They are options. You're exactly right. They are options, but they are not confirmed by an engineer. They're not confirmed for the building. We've had an engineer to look at the building and to say, tell FEMA the conditions of the building. We, there's no need of us hiring an engineer to do any of this soul stuff until after we get past this first step. And we're closer now, I would think that Cory would agree, because of, we have reached out to congressmen, senators, that we've had a congressional inquiry as, on this building. And, you know, this is the process that it takes, sir. I'm sorry that you don't like it, but this is the process it takes. This is a lot of money at stake.
Right.
A tremendous amount of money.
That's what they're trying to say. It's a lot of money at stake, and it seems like the city does not want to put back Stanley White in that location if it costs fifty million dollars.
Who said, who on this board has said that?
Said what?
That we don't want to put it back in that location.
Then vote, then vote.
You just made a statement that, that we don't want to.
That's, I'm repeating what the community has come to me for. I represent War Two, I represent Stanley White, I go to those meetings. We sat in Reverend Johnson's Church.
We went to that meeting and you got up and left after ten minutes.
Because I had to go to a meeting because they already know where my heart lies. That's why you hear me right now. At the end of the day, if you stand with the community and you say that you support their decision to build it back in that location, why is it hard to vote for it? It's a, it's a question on the floor. If you support it, vote for it.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey has a comment, do you, sir?
Right, adjust the resolution.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question or address it to the board? This evening was quite enlightening to me. I didn't know what to expect when I arrived here, and I'm very pleasantly surprised to see that the community, to a certain extent, okay, agrees one hundred percent with the board in the direction that we have been taking. The question that I, and I hadn't planned on starting off this way, but since it's, we're in the middle of it, I will ask that. There's been a committee formed, the BBB, to build back better. It seems to me that the community here has a question as to whether to build it back at the existing location, if that is feasible to do, okay, or to build it someplace else. The, the theory of building it back better doesn't necessarily mean building it back on the exact same site. So I'm not from this city and I don't know the layout of it, but one of the options, okay, to build it back better, okay, besides elevating it at the existing location, is to relocate it outside of the special flood hazard area, which is, which is encouraged by every regulation and every principle that we know by, not to build in a special flood hazard area. So my question is, is there any property that is nearby the community here that, that is serviced by Stanley White presently, okay, that is outside of the floodplain, that, that could be a potential relocation area for the Stanley White Center? And, and the reason that I ask that question is, is that there are monies available for FEMA for relocating outside of the floodplain. As a matter of fact, okay, before any FEMA funding is approved, this facility must go through an environmental eight-step process. It's, it's detailed in 44 CFR 9.5, and it, and it basically says that the FEMA administrator or the FEMA regional director, okay, must do everything possible to relocate facilities that are being, utilizing federal money outside of a floodplain, if at all possible, especially for critical facilities, of which this one is, due to the fact that it houses daycare and due to the fact that it is an essential element to the community. So that eight-step process is, number one, it's not insurmountable to get past it, to be able to build it at the exact location. There, there can be justification to do that. However, the, the question that will come up is, is there any other option or alternative that would be reasonable? And, and that is the question that I'm laying out.
I have a question. If we, if you have to go through all that process, why was it built there to begin with?
That was fifty years.
Right, so fifty years later.
And the reason, and the reason for that, ma'am, is, is that that building was built before the National Flood Insurance Program was instituted, before you were a member of the National Flood Insurance Program, before flood maps were developed, and there was no eight-step process at that point in time. This was all part of a, an act that was passed, it was an executive order, it's 119998 or something to that effect, okay, that, that, that basically states that every option, okay, to build outside of a special flood hazard area or in a floodplain should be exercised, especially when you're using federal money. It's, it's, it's a common sense approach. And, and again, if there are no other options, then, then it can be allowed to, to use FEMA funding, but it is an eight-step process that has to go to, and, and that is the reason that I am raising and asking the issue because as, as this project progresses, that is one of the questions that is going to come up.
Mr. Cory.
Yes, ma'am.
This is the first time I'm hearing the information you just provided, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So when you talked to us on Tuesday.
Yes.
Of last week, you gave us three options, and one of those options was to elevate it at the twelve-foot and build it back in that location. So if that's not possible, why did you give that suggestion as one of the three?
I did not say that that was not possible, ma'am.
Okay, so if it's not.
And, and, and I apologize if you think that I may have misled you.
No, I just want to clarify.
In those options, that was never my intention.
Okay.
There always is an option to relocate. In, in the times that we were discussing it, we were, I believe that we were discussing it in the light of whether it can be rebuilt on the ground as is, and, and, and the options for, for building it back at that location, and, and those were the questions that I answered.
Right, and I appreciate you for clarifying that.
Alderman Kinsey, go ahead.
We have the convention center here that foundation has been compromised. They're not tearing that building down, any building at all. Please, give me a chance. So, I'm trying to understand the difference in the foundation, which pretty much would be the same with Stanley White, which is a gym, this is a convention center. If you would put it up for sale, who's gonna, who's gonna buy?
Nobody.
Okay. So, so, so my thing is, I'm trying to understand that they're going in to do something with that foundation that, it's a term that they use with, I'm not an engineer, that when you have water, the pressure, you know, because water doesn't go up a hill, correct? So it's a force that it gives the bottom, which compromised the foundation there. But they're now repairing that building, gonna put it back into, and it's in a flood zone, okay? It's not, it's not gonna be torn down, it's gonna be repaired, put right back in the flood zone, and it's gonna work again. So when another flood comes through, I guess they go and do their regular routine. Is it any way, what's difference in that building versus that building there when, it's not being elevated? So I'm trying to understand something. Could you help me there, please?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the other building, but the, the basic principle, as I would understand it to be, is, is that the, the convention center was, was not flooded, it was not in a special flood hazard area, and, and if it was flooded, if it, if it was, if it, if it was flooded, okay, is that the, that, the value of the facility, okay, that's, that's, under the prevailing regulations, that the value of the facility, okay, was greater, the, the market value of the facility, you, you, you do two calculations, you do the market value of the facility divided by two compared to the repair cost, and the repair costs have to be less than half of the market value. So therefore, I would assume that all of those calculations were, were met and done for that particular facility. However, with the Stanley White Center, it was determined to be substantially damaged under your floodplain regulations, okay, and certain, and the, the entire facility is, is being subjected to code compliance, which, which means bringing it into compliance with the floodplain regulations.
So you have two different rules. The county has rules, so is the city, so we are governed by two different rules, the two different situations that is compromised, that, the, the thing that bothers my mind is that that foundation was compromised. And, and I, I don't know the depth of the compromising, I guess it was the walls, not the actually foundation, I'm not sure. If someone could help me with that part there on the foundation. I know the walls, with the paint started peeling off the walls here, but I don't know if the foundation itself was compromised like the foundation over there.
Alderman Kinsey, I'm, I'm no expert as to what has happened at the convention center. Since the county owns the convention center, I'm going to merely tell you what I, I have heard.
That's what I'm speaking on.
What, what I understand is, from the original construction of the convention center, there has always been an issue with settlement of the foundation, from the very beginning. Mr. George, you as a planning guy, you probably remember that. From the time it was built, there was always an issue. There came about a lawsuit that eventually, there was money that was transferred from contractors to the county in a, in a, in a matter of a lawsuit to help fix those issues. And those issues still continue to persist even after the lawsuit was settled, and then therefore, there was continued settlement, which they wanted to address since it was so substantially damaged this time. And I don't say, I say that word lightly because their facility was not substantially damaged to the point of over fifty percent. That is the reason why they did not have to go through new code compliance issues and everything else. There's a difference between what happened with Stanley White and what happened in the convention center. There was flooding at the convention center, yes, but was it fifty percent of the value? No. If it was, then I'm sure probably the county would have had to address special circumstances of bringing things into new code compliance, so forth and so on, because our code is the same as their code when it comes to the building code.
Okay.
What happened at Stanley White is, once we came in and done the assessments, or actually we had our professionals come in, remember, we, we employed an architect to come in to do the assessments of what the damages were at Stanley White Recreation, it was determined that the value was over fifty percent. Therefore, it kicked us into new code compliance with regards to all of the electrical components, all of the structural components, all of the, whatever the new code required, as well as the flood insurance program requirements, which is the elevation. Is that correct, Cory?
That is correct.
So if we have to comply with all of those issues, then at that point, Stanley White Recreation Center gymnasium floor at elevation six now needs to become elevation ten, eleven, twelve, whatever we want to build it at, to bring it out of that flood area. So. So that's the special flood hazard area. Corey can probably enlighten y'all as well on what the ramifications are if we do not comply with the federal insurance requirements, as far as bringing our own facilities up to code. I don't know if you want to hit on that real quick, but there are some significant ramifications. Every single property that is owned in the city, privately owned by any resident that y'all play flood insurance for, your flood insurance premiums go up by about tenfold if we don't comply with our own rules. That is citywide.
Okay, Al Mckinsey, I have a question.
I'd like for Corey to answer.
I believe your question had to do with the differential settlement. About four months ago, Tripuri from the engineering company that you hired to do the assessment of the building, came here, and I'm going to try to paraphrase what he said to you, was that when the building flooded and the water stayed there for in excess of five days, it saturated the ground underneath the Stanley White Center, a situation that apparently had never, ever occurred at that particular location before. As a result of that, when you take into consideration the clay soils and other soils that are in the area here, they swell and contract with water and/or the absence of water at different rates. And what happened with the Stanley White Center was, is that either when the floodwaters came in, the soils underneath expanded at different rates in different areas of the building, or when the floodwaters receded, they contracted at different rates in the building. And that caused differential settlement within the building, because the soils are apparently, obviously, not exactly the same throughout the whole, without the whole, throughout the whole structure, because it's not built on piers to support it. And as a result of that, the foundation has settled differently in different areas, and that has resulted and manifested in cracks and settlement issues that are obvious in the walls when you walk through the building. The main supporting walls of the structures in certain areas, okay, have gaps to them. And that is the term of differential settlement, and that's what it's caused by.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Corey. I felt like, I was at a church service earlier, and now I just felt like I sat through economics or 101. My question is this, will the motion on the floor jeopardize in any way potential reimbursement or funding from FEMA?
And the motion is to build it back, correct?
Correct.
To have the intent to build it back.
Let's be clear, yes, you're right. We're calling to have a resolution to vote on this at a future meeting, but there's no reason for us to sit here and play politics tonight and vote, yes, let's put it on the agenda, and then when it gets on the agenda, we don't vote for it. So my point is, let's make the decision tonight, whether we're going to do this or not. If we're not, then let's say so. So my point is... My point all along, and Mr. Woods, you and I have had some good debates in the past, I'll take exception to, I think you're the one that said a waiting game contest. We're playing a waiting game contest, but I think the problem is, we think we're on opposite sides of the ball. We're all on the same side of the ball. The waiting game that we're playing is with FEMA, unfortunately. And yes, could there be some things done? Corey, the next question I have for you, is if the city were to have proceeded with anything, demolition, cleanup, anything of the current facility, would that have jeopardized potential FEMA reimbursement or funding?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's the reason we haven't done anything. There is a rhyme or reason on why we haven't done anything. My last comment is, when we sat, I believe most of us were at that church, Pastor Johnson's church, and we sat there and we heard all this, keep in mind that we were hit with a lot of different things. We were hit with, why can't the facility be cleaned up and used now, okay? Then it was, why can't you have an alternate facility in the meantime while we're waiting for this? My question for you is, if we pass this vote tonight, and it comes back up, and we officially pass a resolution in a future meeting, that is not going to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that going to expedite the time that we can actually start construction on Stanley White any sooner?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to answer your question, your first question, okay? Would it jeopardize or do anything with FEMA? The only thing that I can think of is, is that as this process goes through the eight-step process, if for some reason, okay, FEMA makes a determination that they should not or will not allow the funding to be used back at that location, and you have a resolution stating that it is going to go back at that location, then you are in conflict and will have to deal with it at that point in time.
Okay, Mr. Corey, so if I can ask the people, if I change my motion to say that we would like a resolution drawn up for the city to have the intent to build back Stanley White at the location as long as with FEMA, then that still gives the people the intent that if everything checks out from the eight steps, we're gonna go ahead and build it back, but if not, we have a plan B? So that covers it, we're not in conflict of step one through eight?
That would be correct. And would you mind if I took a few moments to address the community here and explain to them what has been done on the board's behalf up until this point in time?
Yes.
Corey, if you want to talk about frustration, we'll really talk about frustration, because you saw it last week, and me, and I kept my mouth shut last week. I don't know if I can do it tonight.
Go ahead, speak.
Well, I just want you to, if you could express the fact that instead of just, from the emotional toll that we're all going through, trying to get Stanley White back, we were trying and are trying to do it as professional, with the architectural work that's been done, with our consultant, to make sure we get the maximal amount of money funded from state and federal funding, so that we can build it back better. And, you know, if by some small chance it had have not been 50% damaged, and we spent $600,000, I've got two articles here today, one in the News Observer, one in the Sun Journal. The Sun Journal is talking about the empirical data that suggests that, and this is just for subject matter purposes, the USS North Carolina at Wilmington, it flooded in the 40s and 50s twice in that location, it's flooded 102 times in 2018. And so we're all dealing with trying to make the right choice, the right decision, not for 2019, 2020, it's for the children in 2030 and 2050 that are going to be playing at the center, and to make sure it is built for the fact that we are going to get more water, more flooding, more category twos and threes, more 10-foot storm surges. So please know that we are trying to do the right thing for the future of the Duffy Field Area, but go ahead, Corey.
The one idea that I got from listening to the people here speak tonight was, is that there was a certain amount of animosity amongst the community as to why they had no answer from the board in regards to Stanley White Center, and I think I can answer that question. I can assure you tonight that no stone has been left unturned in regards to Stanley White at this point in time, in the one year that we have now been going through and dealing with this. Nothing has been left off of the table, and no effort has been spared to try to get an answer and move this project forward. I give you my assurances of that. The board and the community have exactly the same objectives, and I was pleasantly surprised to see tonight that we have moved past the point of rebuilding the Stanley White Center on the ground where it is now, because if you attempt to do that, the ramifications to that are severe, and I will not go into all of that, but I think that we're past that point, and with the BBB, building it back better, that is the exact correct approach, and that's where the Board of Aldermen and the community is perfectly aligned. As I mentioned to you earlier about the BBB, and I'm just going to touch upon it lightly, I would like to ask that committee to again, okay, research and look in the area to see if there is any place available. When you talk about bringing it back better, I understand the reasons why you want to build it back on the same spot, but building it back better also includes moving it out of the floodplain. Since, just a minute, since there are, since all options should be explored. If there are none, then the answer is, there are none, okay? But, you know, whether it's a property that's nearby, whether it's an abandoned facility that is nearby, whether it's a facility that's up for sale that's nearby, these are all options, and I'll stop on that point there to move that. On May 15th of 2019, we submitted, the city submitted to FEMA all of the engineering estimates and the reports, along with the substantial damage report from the flood crane, flood program administrator. That period of time was four months ago. In that period of time, there has been no answer. You talk about frustration, you have no idea the level of frustration to sit at these biweekly meetings and not get an answer to any questions. You have the differential settlement issue with Stanley White, which we have previously To date, we have had one year of weekly to biweekly meetings with FEMA to try to find a resolution to the Stanley White Center. We have met with the State of North Carolina, Department of Emergency Management, on many, many occasions, trying to find a resolution to move the Stanley White Center forward. The latest meeting happened today. We have begged the state and everybody else that we can think of to attempt to intervene to try to move this project forward, and that includes letters to the White House and to all of your congressional representatives, and those are presently in progress right now. When I said that no stone has been left unturned, I mean it, that everything that anybody can possibly think of to move this project forward is being done. Today, at our regular biweekly FEMA meeting, we met with FEMA again today, and the state was there. As a result of that meeting, we asked what the status of Stanley White was, and the answer that was given is, I have been told not to discuss it. You talk about frustration, here you have a government agency that has been designated to dispense funding and other relief under the Stafford Act, and they show up at a meeting and say, I've been told not to discuss that. Well, how do you move a project forward without discussing it? As a result of that answer, the Board of Aldermen the other night, or last week, okay, authorized the city manager to request a meeting with the federal coordinating officer. Now, most of you probably don't know what that means, but the federal coordinating officer is the one that is appointed by the president to manage disaster aid under the Stafford Act for this particular disaster, okay? She is the ultimate authority to grant, to move a project forward. So the city has asked for a meeting with her and the FEMA Infrastructure Branch Director to try to get some answers to move this project forward. At this point in time, I myself, I've been in this industry for 29 years, I have never, ever seen anything like this before in my entire life, where you cannot sit down and talk with somebody and get an answer. That is the situation that the city is at at this point in time. I believe that that pretty much sums it up. If I have missed anything, then please let me know. I just wanted to assure the community that in one year, we have done absolutely everything that we possibly can, and when you say that the board hasn't given you an answer, I find it difficult for them to give you an answer when they can't get any answers.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. I just want to say that going to the meetings with the representatives, I know that they know that the city has done everything that we can do, and that is a standstill, and I know out of the frustration that probably didn't come across tonight, but the citizens know that we are doing, as a representative of the board and a citizen, I know that we have done everything possible, you know, the mayor and everybody. I feel like this tonight is just letting the community know so that they can rest easy at night, that the city has their best interests, and that we're going to support that they want Stanley White back in that location, as long as it's feasible. And maybe that needs to be the change in the resolution, but to them, this resolution is going to mean that the city stands with them in what they've cried out for at four, five, six meetings and everything. All it is, is a resolution to say, if at all possible, we would like Stanley White to be built back where it is, if at all possible. And that's not directed toward you, that's directed to my fellow constituents, because, and board members, this is nothing political. This is not political.
I agree with you.
I'm looking at you, but I'm speaking to the masses. This has nothing to do with politics.
No, it doesn't.
Because regardless, we're voted in and we're voted out. This is simply a community crying out about their children, their children, children, the elder, that all they want is the city to say yes, if at all possible, we want you to build back Stanley White where it is. I don't understand why we can't say yes to that.
Al Mckinsey, do you have something?
Is that the amended motion?
Yes, that's my amended motion.
Is it seconded?
I second it.
Call for question.
Okay, question's been called for, yes.
I just asking for her to restate it. She said a couple of different things.
Okay, the resolution, we're at, I'm asking to make a motion for a resolution to say that if at all possible, through FEMA, and the, I mean, I don't really know how to say, if at all possible, if it could be built back in that location, the city will support it being built back.
Based on FEMA's recommendation.
Based on FEMA's recommendation.
As well as engineering.
As well as engineering, if at all possible, the first spot, they want it to be built back at Stanley White. At 901 Chapman Street. If FEMA checks out, if engineering checks out, and it's able to be built back there, we want it to be built back at Stanley White's current location.
And I assume you mean a little bit higher than it is right now?
Yes, right.
Scott, is this on the next agenda? So it's not necessarily a resolution tonight, it's a proposal?
It's a motion to put the resolution on the agenda.
On the next agenda, yes, ma'am.
We're fixing to vote on the motion, and we can have some more discussion when the vote is over. We'll listen, as long as you get, if the audience wants to talk, we're gonna keep it open, we want everybody to be able to be heard. I do want to say, if this passes, the seven-legged officials have been working hard, the staff has been working hard. We need your help. If you know a congressman or a senator in California, Minnesota, Florida, if you know a staff person in DC, if this passes, we will need your help, because a lot of times, these type things, when we've done all we can do, the grassroots is where the momentum has got to be.
I think the best...
So we will need your help.
The best thing that the citizens can do at this point in time is engage their...
And as I've said before, to leaders in the community, if at any time you felt that for any reason, we have not done a human's job of trying to get an answer and the funding, I encourage you to go behind us, go to the center of Congress, tell us, any of the congressmen, any of the state leaders, and check, and if we've left something out, please let us know, so that we can get this accomplished. So at this time, if it's okay with the Aldermen, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call. Did you have something, sir?
Can I just ask a question to Bernard?
Yes.
Bernard, let me ask you a question, George. Too many Bernards in here. You know, I've been in public service for...
We did call for question, but go ahead, as long as it's okay.
For, I didn't get a second, so it doesn't matter. A long time, and I'll second it, but, one of the things that I wanted to do when we build back the Stanley White Center is to build it back Red Cross certified, so it can be utilized as an emergency shelter, with generation services and everything that's needed. The issue that I'm gonna have, and I'm getting ready to ask the city manager tomorrow to do some work in there, is we need elevations of the roads, because if the roads flood going around the center, there's no need to try to build this back certified by the Red Cross as a shelter, because they... because they want certified if you can't get to the building. So just wanted to, this is conversations that we've had, I've had with the mayor and members of these boards about, I want to see if and when we build this thing back, well, actually, it's going to be when we build it back, that it be Red Cross certified for a shelter in the community.
We'd like it to be too. Because we have a vision for our community center, that it be the center of the community for education, for the elders, for the youth.
Sure.
They will have a health clinic there. We need all those services right there in the community. And I heard something that was very heartening. The gentleman, he said, "If there is no other alternative, then FEMA would allow it to be built there if there's no other alternative." Now, we've, I don't know, another area in the vicinity with 40 acres vacant. There's nothing available there. And the other piece of that is that we are willing to, and we are going to, we're going to write FEMA. We're going to write the state division of emergency management and let them know what this community wants, how we feel about it, and the fact that Stanley White Recreation Center is historic. One of the things I didn't mention in my presentation was that Stanley White Recreation Center, the concept itself goes back to just after the Civil War. Our first recreation center that was on Commerce Street, right off Broad Street, was built by the black veterans of the Civil War, the Union soldiers. The James Beecher Grand Army of the Republic Lodge, which was located there. After those gentlemen got older, it became more of a community center and then a recreation center. When Craven Terrace was built, it was torn down, and then we had that same heritage to be carried over to Cedar Street, where we built a recreation center. And that center was built by our mothers and fathers, parents, schoolteachers, who bought bricks and blocks individually, carried them up there. Jasper Hayes and others of that brick mason department built that place, built the walls. The guys played. They played, they recreated there without a floor and without a roof till the city petitioned the city to put a roof on. And the city said, in order for them to put the roof on, that we had to deed it to the city. And that's how the city got the Cedar Street Recreation Center. So what I'm saying there is that our recreation centers, they're the heritage of our African-American community. You know, we are self-sufficient community. There was a time when we couldn't come to the Board of Aldermen to ask that we get assistance, that you do the right thing. We had to do it through a grassroots effort right there in our community. That same community that's here tonight asking that the right thing be done. And the right thing is simply that there is no other area. So we are going to write our representatives. We're going to get together. Because we know that if we don't say anything, nothing to be said. We have to speak for ourselves. That's our legacy. I hope I answered your question.
Okay, ma'am, could you repeat the motion before we vote on it?
Really?
Maybe the city manager can repeat it.
No, I've got it. To put a resolution on the next agenda that says the board intends to raise and rebuild Stanley White Recreation Center at its current location if approved by FEMA and an engineer.
All right.
That's my motion. Do I still got a second?
You still have my second.
All right.
Fair roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Alvo? Alderman Assis? Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Beagle?
Thank you very much. Sorry, we took so much of your time, but it's good that we are on the same accord. We're working with you, and you work with us. I can assure you that we will be lobbying to, remember it is, we need to lobby with. I talked to my gentleman over here to find out who we need to send letters to, and that's what we'll do. Thank you so much. We're going to rebuild Stanley White.
Before I go, I think, Reverend Hinge, you want to make?
Say what? Oh, I'm sorry. I was waiting because you said that we would have some discussion afterwards. Inasmuch as you have stated in the motion that you would rebuild Stanley White, I haven't been to all of the meetings, but my understanding of the area calls me to ask the question of whether you're going to do, the city is going to do anything about the drainage in all of the areas of the city. Because Duffy Field needs new drainage. And I know Stanley White is on the agenda, but that, I think that's one of the greater needs for the city. Something has to happen with the drainage of the city.
Yes, we had that at workshop last week, and that's a pretty long discussion. And if you want to just do a cursory of what we discussed last week with drainage.
I'll attempt to do that as much as possible to summarize our discussion in a two-minute response if I can. So there were significant discussion regarding drainage, actually, not only in Duffy Field, but throughout all of New Bern. And that includes our drainage ways, that includes our working with FEMA again. And Corey gave a very long discussion about the problems that we're running into with that particular matter as well. But we're trying to work through several different functions of USDA as well as FEMA to get funding so that we can potentially address all 80 miles of ditches and streams within our city to muck out and restore those back to even pre-disaster conditions from several disasters ago that probably need some work. So that is ongoing, continuing those ongoing discussions with FEMA as well as the USDA and potential funding there. I will say that our staff are doing everything that they can with the limited amount of staff and resources that they have to address those issues. I will say also that regardless of ditch clearing and ditch maintenance and engineering, if we have a Hurricane Florence event, there is nothing that we will engineer or do to impact the Duffy Field community or any community that is elevation six or four or three or whatever. North Hills Drive, down at the end of the cul-de-sac, it's elevation three. Anytime the river goes up 10 feet, it's going to have seven feet of water down in that cul-de-sac. That's over off of Semen Street. Same thing if you look at Evergreen Cemetery, where that channel comes across. Basically, the mouth of the Duffy Field Canal ties into the Jack Smith Creek. If we have 10 feet of river elevation that backs up into the Jack Smith Creek and comes across into the Duffy Field Canal, you can count on those seven feet because it's at elevation three right down there at Evergreen Cemetery. So you can count on six or seven feet. There's no way that we can engineer and overcome what God puts down on us. So I will say that I don't want to, I don't want to present false expectations because we are presented with the problems of elevation here in New Bern, and everybody knows that. We are flat, we are low, and that river drives a lot. So what we've got to do is build back better, just like everyone here agrees, that any kind of changes, any kind of new building codes, any kind of new development occurs, we need to ensure that we build those at elevations that are going to meet the future as far as flood requirements and also building standards. So that's the things that we're going to be going through with residency planning here at the city. We've gone out, we've already secured $45,000 in grant funds for a residency plan for the entire city, as well as, we currently have application for about $70,000 of additional money to pay for this plan that's going to cover residency, not only for flooding, but all disasters. It could be wildfires. It could be loss of, you know, major employers, whatever it can be. We've got to make sure that we are able to overcome those issues and remain resilient as a medium-to-large-size municipality in the state of North Carolina. So that could be a brack at Cherry Point. I mean, there's all kinds of different things that I could think of that could potentially negatively impact this community. A hurricane is just one of them. And flooding is another result of those hurricanes. So those are the kind of things that we're working on that are long-term plans, long-term future decisions that this board's got to make and hopefully comes along with some funding that we will get from the federal and also federal organizations and potentially some state organizations as a result of some of the continued regular flooding that we have in this area.
Thank you.
Do we have that little chalk available tonight that we've been, that we're working toward? And how that the, when the water comes in from the river and comes through the pipes, do we have that available? Is that something that needs to be shown tonight?
Yeah, I think Colleen's got it. Let's see if she can pull it back up because that was from a previous. It kind of give you an idea of what I'm talking about here as far as whenever we look at a river rise and what happens at certain elevations within.
Mr. Mark, I just want, can we take a recess for five minutes? Because I know people are going to clear out, and we want to be able to hear everything that's being said.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
On the motion, say aye.
Okay, we're back. Ms. Kinsey? All right. You have more comments, sir?
Yes, sir. I actually hosted one of the meetings at my church. And, no, I was at the church at a meeting at St. Peter's. And I heard that there was a possibility that the city was considering a levy and that possibly that levy would, and the Army Corps of Engineers were building levy. And I was talking to the person who I thought said it, and I asked them, were they considering that all of the waters, not only in New Bern, but the existing areas around us, even in different counties, is the same water? And if they put a levy in one place and not in the others, just redirecting water to flood out someone else?
Yes, sir. Alderman Beagle and myself had an email from a constituent. It was actually an engineer that passed along some information to us. And from what staff has instructed us in the past, exactly what you said. Water is going to find the lowest place to infiltrate. So unless you were to build a dike or levy around the entire city and seal that up with no way for water to get through, it's not really feasible to have that in our area. Is that correct, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, you're talking tens to millions, ten to hundreds of millions of dollars to build something like that. And who knows how long. But I think, you know, I had a discussion with someone, as a matter of fact, as late as last night about this matter. And, I mean, even if you were to build it at a six-foot berm or seven-foot berm around the entire city at the cost of, you know, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars, then Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Florence, they would have all topped. And then what you've got is a seven-foot pond that takes weeks for you to get all the water out.
Oh, absolutely.
So I honestly don't think that's a feasible approach. Now, if the federal government and the Army Corps of Engineers or the state of North Carolina come in and they determine that there is some way in which you can adjust the channels of the banks of the Neuse River and do some things or utilize some farmlands, upland to divert water coming downstream, that helps out certain communities. But in our particular instance, all of our flooding occurred when the wind was driving it at its hardest up into the Pamlico Sound, which ultimately led to us having 12 feet, if you count the waves, in downtown and inland the Duffy Field area and everything else. And that is something that we're going to have to overcome from some other standpoint, that the inland farm areas and the inundation of rainfall that occurs on inland is not going to, it's really not going to help us that much. So there's got to be kind of a joint approach. My understanding is, is that the state of North Carolina is starting to look at river basins as in the Tarpan, the Neuse, the Cape Fear, and starting to approach those as a way to look at, what can we do to help mitigate these impacts in the future? But that's something that's way above us at the state, almost federal level.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Do you have anything else to remain to the Stanley White Recreation Center, sir?
I do. My name is Anthony Reiner. I listened to what y'all said about rebuilding something that can't be done. My little bit of schooling I got from the first grade, I learned that if you're not afraid to go across a bridge that's been built in war, how can you say something can't be rebuilt to the natural causes? Okay, when you measure the rocks at Mount Merrell, you got the tiny ones, you got the big ones, you got the little ones. Every rock have to be measured to a certain degree of what land it goes to. And I don't understand why y'all got to have wait for a solution for them because it should be built, regardless of what you're saying. If you look back at the time of Stanley White, it never been flooded until y'all built that building on Third Avenue, pushed a football field up 10 feet high and turned the water exactly towards Stanley White. And that's what caused the flood. Exactly what caused the flood. So if you want to blame somebody, you should blame your own representative who going out there and doing inspection to have something done. If you want to blame somebody, because if you take a football field and fill it up with water and angle it down right that one direction, the water got to go that way. And that's why that building was the first time that flooded. Now, the first time you ever had a flood was in 1953 or 1954. It flooded about the whole Craven County. And then you talk about the insurance builder of making it higher. Your insurance is not regulated by a city of New Bern. Your flood is regulated by the whole state of North Carolina. Ask me, how do I know? I'm an insurance man. I know what I'm talking about. So all this other crap, you know what I'm talking about? It should be said, we are going to build it. Because you can take rocks and make it be exactly what you want it to be. Do that bridge would be out there? None of these schools in Craven County wouldn't be built where they built it. All of them flooded. But you let your children go in there, all of them got that stuff that grows in there. That moss, whatever you call it? All of them got it. West Craven got it. My daddy helped build it, West Craven, matter of fact. West Craven Middle School, my daddy helped build it. Matter of fact, it has something to do with my way in so many ways.[1694.77] Matter of fact, it has something to do with my way in so many ways. But if you look at a pattern of development, always don't say the cause of good and bad development, that the conflict is yours. The building should be put back regardless of what them people say, because you can put a building and make it come to code anywhere. Do Walmart would be there? The most crime in New Bern is Walmart. Do it would be there. That was put on number, a swamp land.
Sir, the.
Then when you go flood, let's go flood. Let me go flood.
Well, excuse me, point over here, sir. The open mic tonight was in reference to the Stanley White.
It's in reference to Stanley White.
Sir, if you have comments concerning Stanley White, we're welcome to hear them.
Okay, let's get back to Stanley White. Stanley White should not be moved, point blank, because you can make it to be safe in every direction you can. Man always did it. Stanley White could be safe regardless of what anybody say. It can be built. Only reason I went to other places, because other places give you a reference to write back where I'm coming from. That's why I use them other places for reference. So you can't say, well, it's just this place or that place, this place or that place. I use them other buildings as references. And when you use references, that's what you're going. Reference is what makes this door open, because they use other references for insurance companies so this building can be opened. Because what I mean, other insurance companies don't show when I open. You made it safer here. Even when they had the first jail over there, they made it safe. I was there. One day because I was in jail, I was there. So if you want to know true about it, but you can make that building safe. That's all I have to say, but just like I told y'all before, I know some people want to buy their land, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, if you want to come up and make. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I knew you, I saw you out there earlier, and we want to make sure if you have something concerning Stanley White that you want to.
Yes, I do. I have, this is my first time speaking. My name is Winetta Tolliver. It's my first time speaking. I've been to the majority of the meetings, just really got into it because I didn't realize at the point in time how big of an impact that the gym itself is a place for the children to go where they're, when they are at home, a lot of those children are not surrounded by the atmosphere of love and positiveness. They're around a lot of negativity, because parents this day and age, along with myself, have not really and truly been monitoring our children as we should have been doing with what they look at on TV, on phones, on games. They're not being monitored. So they see what's on this stuff, they're around negativity, that's how they build their life, based on that negativity. The gym was there to help them to stay out of the negative part. Ever since that gym has been closed, and I've been living in that area for just three years, even though I'm in New Bern, but I've been in that area for just three years. And since that gym has been closed, the juveniles in that area, they have gotten worse. How they've been doing and the negativity that has been showing up a lot more than usual, that's saying. Those children need somewhere positive to go where they can get some kind of love and comfort that they are looking for, and they cannot do it at home. So they have to go somewhere like the Stanley White Gym in order to get it. And once it gets fixed, I made a promise to God, I'm going to go there and volunteer some of my time there, because I understand what it's like to feel not to be loved. And that's what they're looking for. And as long as we're not there to help them, they're going to go to that negative world. And I don't want to see nobody, not even my enemy's children, to go that route. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you for.
Thank you.
Come up.
Thank you.
Elijah, you want to make some comments?
Real short, my background is in construction.
Give her your name.
My name is Elijah Brown, nine sixteen for Titan Drive. My background is masonry. My dad was a cement finisher for many years. I worked on most of all these, the old motels that down here, hotel motels, whichever way you want to, from the foundation up. I worked many years at Cherry Point, deal with the Corps of Engineers with situations like this. My thing is, I heard a few sticking points in why Stanley White might not be at the same location. But I talked, and I thought, I looked around, and I saw the bypasses. None of the overpasses would be without buildup of soil. We go across them every day. So my thing is, when I see pollens put down, when you put pollens down, they are driven down to granite. So it's at the solidst point that it could ever be. When you put those piers up, the issue of soil is gone. It's gone. So in my mind, there's no reason why Stanley White can't be built in its present location simply because if the sticking point with FEMA would be the soil, when you put it upon those pollens, the soil is not a problem. So when you go and think and you do your research, just think on those points. There's no reason why it can't be put back at its present location if the holdup with FEMA is the soil. That's my, that's my take right there.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And anybody else on Stanley White? At this time, before we go to the next item, I do, we do have a couple of Boy Scouts, I don't know if you guys are going to have to leave early or not, but if you'd like to come up to the podium, we'd be real proud to know who you are and what your scout troop is, and what your rank is, and what your, what your vision and ambitions are for life and for your Boy Scouts troop. Yes, sir. Now, pull that little microphone down if you need to, go right ahead and speak kind of loud.
Hi, my name is Ben Bradley. I'm a Boy Scout of Troop 132. Really appreciate being able to come here today, and I learned a lot. It was a great experience to see how it all works.
Well, great. Now, what church are you, is Troop 132?
Uh, Garber.
Garber, okay, great. Okay, and we, and go right ahead.
Hey, I'm Sam, I'm Ben's brother. I'm also out of 132 at Garber. I'm a Life Scout working on my Eagle, and I also just appreciate being here, seeing how the board communicates with the people, and that's really cool.
We appreciate you being on. Congratulations on your accomplishments.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Okay, anything else on this item before we go forward? Okay, this time we're going to go to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six, six is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving a contract for the purchase of property identified as tax parcel ID eight dash zero zero two dash C dash zero five five. This property since the May, May of twenty, sorry, twenty-fifth of May, nineteen ninety-nine, has been leased by the city. It's on Broad Street and identified as the tax parcel that I mentioned, from a Mr. Dale Stroud. This property, along with the other contiguous parcels, has been utilized as a leased public parking lot. The city desires to purchase the property for eighty-one thousand dollars, which represents the appraised value that we had performed on it. And this purchase will be funded through the Municipal Service District Fund, which is the, for any of those, just to kind of clarify, the Municipal Service District Fund is a tax that is self-imposed by those within the boundary of the Municipal Service District. It's a, it's a self-imposed tax of thirteen cents, is that correct?
Thirteen, thirteen point two five.
Thirteen point two five, it adjusted a little bit. Thirteen point two five cent in addition to the tax that the city charges all of its residents. So that kind of give you a little detail about the MSD. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a contract for the purchase of the property identified as tax parcel ID eight eight dash zero zero two dash C dash zero fifty-five.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. See, now let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving a deed and transfer, and also a reversion agreement with Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, North Carolina. The city and Craven County jointly own ten parcels of land which Habitat for Humanity seeks to acquire for the purpose of building affordable housing. The city, I'm sorry, the county has agreed to convey to the city its interest in these properties. In turn, the city will convey the properties to Habitat, subject to a transfer and reversion agreement that requires Habitat to develop affordable housing on site. Should they not do so, then at that point, that's the reason for the reversion agreement, that they would revert back to us if they chose to not do that. The proposed resolution approves an agreement with Craven County, a deed of the Habitat, a deed to Habitat, and a transfer and reversion agreement as discussed, and we're happy to answer any questions. And I know Mr. Williams has been waiting patiently for this one, and he's out there.
I'd just like to make a comment. Mike, I just want to thank you so much for what Habitat has done. It's been incredible since your arrival here in New Bern, the speed at which you're developing these properties and getting people into homeownership. And I just want to thank you. I see you transforming sections of Duffy Field and other neighborhoods like never before. So thank you, and I'm so glad we're able to work with you in this manner. But thank you and your staff and all the people that work with Habitat.
I feel the same way.
I'd like to echo that, and, you know, the other day on Burn Street, we had a lot of new volunteers, and it's just seemed like there's a lot of energy, and we really appreciate what you're doing for Habitat.
This doesn't follow in the redevelopment commissions?
I think the majority of these properties are in the Pembroke, in the Pembroke area.
Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a deed and transfer and reversion agreement with Habitat of Humanity of Craven County, North Carolina.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. See, and now let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a resolution calling for a public hearing to amend section fifteen dash one forty-six table of permissible uses of the land use ordinance. As you recall, at your tenth of September meeting, the Governor Board discussed special use permits for bed and breakfast establishments in the R six, R eight, and R ten zones. At the conclusion of the discussion, the board adopted a resolution to request an amendment to the land use ordinance to eliminate such establishments in these zones. The Planning and Zoning Board will be considering that request at their October first meeting, as requested by the board, and if it is approved, the Board of Alderman is asked to conduct a public hearing on the twenty-second of October to receive comments and consider amending the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mark, so I'm just reiterating, just from my understanding, all we're doing tonight is agreeing and voting that we want it to be put on the agenda and have a public hearing. We're not making the decision.
That is, that is correct. Much like any other process, since you have requested that the Planning and Zoning Board take this up, they're going to review this on their first of October meeting. Anytime they do that, they provide you a recommendation, and then the board has a public hearing to take input from the public, and also you will have the opinion or the suggestion of the Planning and Zoning Board on this particular matter. And then at that point, the board is asked to make a decision whether or not you wish to amend this.
Thank you so much for clarification. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution calling for a public hearing to amend section fifteen one forty-six table of permissible uses of the land use ordinance.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. See, and now let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries appointments, Alderman Odom?
No, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I have one appointment. I have a young man, Mr. Marcus Simmons, he is an employee with the state employees credit union. He is a New Bernian. He's been here, living in this city. He's an outstanding citizen, and he's a very dedicated, hardworking young man, and I think that he would be a great fit to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say. Alderman Best, do you have any other appointments?
No, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Nothing.
Alderwoman Harris?
No, sir.
Alderman Bingle?
No, sir.
Okay, this time attorneys report.
That's important, Mayor.
City manager's report.
I have nothing tonight, sir.
Let's go to new business, starting with Alderman Bingle.
I had discussed this with the city manager, and I'd like to carry it before the Board of Alderman. I would like at next meeting or in the next couple of meetings to ask the abatement officer and the minimum housing officer to come and speak to us and perhaps do a presentation. I don't know about the rest of you all, but I get many calls about abatement. People calling me about yards not being cut, houses not being boarded up, just violations, and it's really overwhelming. And I don't think a lot of the citizens understand the process. I don't think that we understand the process sometimes, and it's very confusing. So I would really like it if it's the board's desire, the majority of us, to have this presentation where we can get, I'd like to have the both, the two Nancy's, so the minimum housing and the abatement officer come, but I'd also like the head building inspector, so he can address these issues as well, so we can clarify to the citizens, in front of the citizens, what these processes are, and educate ourselves and our citizens, so.
I support that.
Does anybody else feel the same?
I know a lot of calls about it.
I know today, Alderman Bingle, we were talking about, you know, we're talking about a couple of houses that needed boarded up, and procedurally, it's not only those two individuals, but it's the police, the fire department, and staff, and planning, et cetera. When we have buildings that have fires, they're in harm's way, they need to be immediately boarded up. If there's discarded material out near the sidewalk or the road that's, you know, hazardous to folks traversing the area, that needs to be expeditiously taken care of. Do you agree with me on that?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I.
So that's more of what I think.
It was brought to my attention, and it's kind of dragging a little on it because of some of these issues and rules, but again, the health and the safety of our community is what's best. And then also, there's some other concern about, some people get abatement letters, some people don't. You're applying rules here, not applying rules there. And again, we just want to know what the process is. I want the citizens to understand what the process is, and then let's follow that format. I would, so, Mr. Manager, if you could schedule that, maybe, you know, one hour, I'm not saying the very next week, but I would like for this to be an important discussion.
You all good with that?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay.
I support it.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Alderman Harris?
The only thing I have is Ms. Anshout wanted me to read this out. They're calling for volunteers, the Duffy Field Phoenix Project and Habitat of Humanity. They are going to beautify Duffy Field, so they're doing trash pickup, debris removal, and it's going to be the weekend of October third through the fifth, two thousand nineteen, and they're meeting at the shelter at nine AM, and lunch will be provided. So October third through the fifth, the Henderson Park Shelter that they have, and at nine AM, and lunch will be provided. If you have any questions, you can get in contact with Anshout or Reverend Johnson. So I just wanted to let the community know, if you wanted to help clean up, that's a perfect day to volunteer. That's all I have.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
Just an update, if you would, Mr. City Manager, on Old Airport Road. Did you know I was going to ask that question, or did I catch you to surprise?
I did know you, I did not know you were going to ask that, but we have received, we were hoping to probably present this to you at a later date, but I will try the best that I can. We have received the quotes, the bid proposals from our contractors. There were two separate bid items, you know, the portion that is from basically Taberna to, I think that is landscape or creekscape, landscape, and then the portion that goes from landscape all the way to the bridge down where the brush creek, I guess, comes in. They came in significantly higher than what the proposed budget was, and that's probably because of the width of the road and some of the drainage improvements that were necessary for us to do that. So Matt has a scheduled meeting with contractor, was it today, where they were going to address their bid and potentially discuss some options that we would have to potentially lower that number. And then at that point, we would be bringing that back to the board for consideration.
But it's in the works, that's important.
That is correct, sir.
Thank you.
My apologies, Mayor. Mr. Tucson, I just wanted to let you know that my mother-in-law got into an accident the other day, and she wanted me to report to you to let you know that the officers were outstanding. It was a hit and run. She called nine-one-one, and within twenty minutes, Officer J.A. Weaver got the individual and was able to move forward with the process of doing what they needed to do. So I just want to let you know that I appreciate the officers and everything that you do for the city to protect us and make sure everything is good. So thank you.
Okay, you got anything else?
Just want to mention briefly sidewalks in New Bern. Real proud of where we are, the new piece of equipment. Talked to some of the employees that are using it. If there's additional machinery needed to expedite and comprehensively get our sidewalks where we want them. I talked with Mayor John Kirkland of River Bend and Mayor Chuck Tyson of Trent Woods. You know, now that Trent Woods is paying their sewer debt off, they're putting in a lot of sidewalks. We all feel like it's a great time to reach out and try to find additional furniture. Alderman Kinsey's an expert at that. And essentially, you know, from Jack Smith Creek in New Bern to River Bend, let's have sidewalk, and let's be able to, you know, walk, jog, and ride bicycles. So again, dream with us on this, and let's continue to partner, just like we have our street programs on, Victor Taylor was really big on that. Let's all chip in here and identify, as we are cleaning the sidewalks, we're finding some problems with them. And we want these sidewalks safe and passable. So again, anything the public can do to help us with this, appreciate everything everybody's everybody's doing.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman Best?
Well, since you're mentioning sidewalks, uh, you're talking of existing sidewalks, I would like to know, you know, um, down Garden Street, that is a main street that a lot of the residents over in the Duffy Field area, they utilize that street coming from one point to another, especially coming down towards, um, the Stanley White and, and, uh, walking on through, going to the, um, hospital, so they're having to come around. Is there any way, whom do I speak with in reference to trying to see what a study needs to be done, or whatever project needs to be put in place to try to get a sidewalk on one side of that street coming down Garden Street?
You'd like to tie that in with the sidewalks over on JT Barber on Washington Street?
Yes.
And tie those in back to Third Avenue and that type of, like we rode around that day and.
Yes. So.
Um, I'm sure, what we'll do is I'll have Matt get with you, um, if you don't mind,
reach out to you and, and contact you. I know at one point, um, that was a, uh, that was something that, um, Alderman White, who was actually, former Alderman White, was, who was, um, uh, sat in your seat, and one of the things that he really looked at.
Curbs and gutters.
Excuse me?
Curbs and gutters.
Curbs and gutters, yeah. Um, and, and sidewalks, curbs and gutters, and sidewalks was one of his things, and we looked at that particular street at one time. I know there are some, some issues that we would have to address, um, because of the distance of some of the homes off of the asphalt in that particular community, all along in the Duffy Field community, 'cause the homes are built so close to the road, uh, that's one of the things that we'd have to address, so you kinda, it, it, it's almost one thing to say, hey, let's look at doing that, but then, is it feasible?
Right.
Uh, without impacting people's safety as they walk along streets that don't have curbing, so forth and so on. So that's one of the things that we have to really look at, and especially in that community. So I'll have Matt, uh, go out there, take a look at that particular street, and then, uh, he can get in touch with you and, and see what the feasibility of something like that is.
All right, thank you. Um, I have two other concerns, and I was approached by some individuals, and I didn't have time to reach out to the Alderman of that ward, so, um, who, which Alderman is responsible for the Red Robin Lane, um, Trent Road up to South Gate area? That's me. Okay. Um, where, um, one of your constituents reached out and wanted to know when was that area gonna be paved, the highway there? From Red Robin up to the South Gate subdivision, there's, there's, can I get it? Some help?
I, I, I very seriously doubt that Matt probably has that answer directly tonight, but however, he can look at his resurfacing schedule plan and see where that meets on the rating schedule, and then at that, he can report that back.
And I apologize for not.
Oh, no, that's okay.
With the, with you earlier, but it was told to me, and I didn't have an opportunity to get.
Can you just email me the information, so when Matt gets back to me, I can just call him and update him?
Part of the rating on that is that, unless I'm mistaken, the state has funded us and finally paid us for that, is that correct?
We're talking about Trent Road, I thought we were talking about Red Robin Lane.
Part of our ownership was that Trent, uh, Trent Road, the state paid one part and another part and didn't pay that part, and part of the, of the negotiation of the city taking over Trent Road was the reimbursement, and I think that we've been funded for that. So if the state in North Carolina gave us the money, then I would think that the rating said that it needs paid, and by the time we get it paid, the other sides will need it again, um, because it's been, Jeffrey, how long has that been?
Hmm.
It's signed back.
Six or seven years.
And it's been funded.
Yeah.
And I stand corrected if I'm wrong.
Now, we, we have received that money, uh, at the request, matter of fact, we did, we just received that this year, is that correct, Matt?
Yes.
Yeah.
March.
Um, and, uh, so that money has been received, it really kinda goes back to this overall design of Trent Road, whether the board wants to consider relaying it all the way, and in doing so, that money could be used for, uh, some potential offsetting of what that ca- capital cost would be, but ultimately, that is gonna be one of your main thoroughfares, it already is one of your main thoroughfares, uh, throughout town, and there are sections of it that narrow down to a two-lane road and then open back up to three lanes and then narrow back down, it kinda, kinda goes in and out. Uh, now that we have the new development from, you know, where the Academy Sports and Harris T here are, that's all three lanes, been completed all the way through, but ultimately, you know, it kinda goes back to this, do we want to do and tackle that as a large project in the future? And that was discussed when we were talking about the Oak Road, um, improvements, as well as, uh, the old airport road improvements.
We, we, we were discussing that, and if I remember correctly, um, the budget numbers came back a lot higher than we were anticipating, and, um, I also believe that was also including widening what portions are not three-lane now, but also repaving everything. Um, I, I would suggest maybe we take a look at fixing those areas that, that need to be paved, but also revisiting the widening, because anybody, and, and it's, it's Alderman, Alderwoman Harris's ward is the parts that I'm mentioning, um, there's only, I wanna say, three places that's not three-lane, um, but if we've got quite a bit of development going on in that area, it would certainly be beneficial.
I agree. And I have one other, I was approached with today, um, I don't know whose ward is this, I don't know if it's yours, Alderman Harris or Alderman Astor, and I apologize for not getting it to you before, but I do want to make this known tonight. They're asking for a left-turn signal over on, I guess it's Country Club Road? Is, as you come across the bridge, right there at the intersection, they're asking if a left-turn signal can be put there because it, it's taking the, the people so long to turn onto Seventy West.
Right. I, I spoke to Ms. Carol, and I let her know, I remember Mr. Woods came up during a meeting and requested that, and I know that we were supposed to see if that's possible, I don't know if we got an update, but I remember him speaking on that in regards to, that was a concern.
We, we did get a response from DOT on that, Matt can answer that.
Um, I haven't thought about it since we, and I believe we did send a response on that, but we did reach out to DOT, uh, following the construction on, uh, First Street, and the response from DOT was there were no plans at this time to put in a left-turn signal, uh, to turn, dedicate a left-turn signal on the Highway Seventy. I believe that's westbound. Uh, what they did mention is they will continue to monitor it, and it becomes an issue, it's something they can address in the future, but at this time, there were currently no plans to do that.
Okay. And there's nothing, is there anything, like, you know, how we do resolutions, to send to them, you know, let them know it's a concern to the citizens, that, you know, is there anything to do like that, or we just kinda stand still, and if they evaluate and they feel something needs to be done, then it be, then it's done?
We work at the pleasure of the board, and if you wish to adopt a resolution, we'll send it on to them.
Five points, the left-turn signal, the way we modify that, I, I know we had come out and pocketed some of that on the Bronx renovation, that's an example of, uh, the board, I think, made a resolution, I think Alderman Taylor, and then we spent about, what, twenty thousand bucks and did that?
Often, oftentimes, in those situations where it's something that they don't warrant based on traffic counts or whatever they see, when they say that there's no plan for that, but we'll continue to monitor it, if the board wishes to move forward with something, they may willing, they may be willing to do a, a, some kind of a cost share, uh, they did it with the five-points location the mayor's talking about, they did it with the, uh, blinking lights at Taberna and Highway Seventy, and also at Carolina Colors entrance there at, uh, at, uh, Highway Seventy as well, so.
So can we get together sometime and have a discussion, and we'll work on if there's anything that could be done, and if so, I'll ask to bring it to the board at the next meeting or the, the twenty-second, but just give us time to be able to talk, for me to understand the process of anything that we can do.
In the meanwhile, maybe we should ask for some crash data.
Some crash data? I'm gonna listen to what the chief said.
I mean, we can definitely look into that, I know that, the, the, with the road diet being there, and I think we could, we could probably go back regardless of whether the, the new road diet's there, to determine if there's any kind of crash data, but we can get the chief to report that as well, and that might be, that would probably be a good start.
Procedurally, the way we handled the Broad Street left turn, and let's maybe follow that same pattern, it worked for that.
Okay.
And, well, yeah, we really appreciate what the state's done with that, by the way, now if we just move on over to Seventh Street, and if we were right, I don't think there, I'm, I'm saying it, 'cause I don't think they're gonna pay it anytime soon, and maybe Seventh Street's in pretty bad shape, and that is a state road.
Yeah, Highway Fifty-Five West as well. Well, I appreciate.
And the list goes on and on.
Land burning being done, although that's your ward.